All right, it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Diane, could you give us a rundown of who we have on the call?
Yeah, I think I'm missing somebody, but I have Trish, Chief Jewett, Larry, Terry, Pete, Charlie, yourself, Nancy, Jack, Tina.
Yeah, you missed me.
Oh, okay, thank you.
How could we ever do that?
(laughing)
Uh, let's turn it over to the woman of the hour, Trish, if you could give us the rundown, please.
Sure.
Barbara White.
Oh, hi Barbara.
Hi Barbara.
Hello.
Okay, so I've got, um, five reports to give you. Um, I've tried to cross out things that have been repetitive. Um, they want us to know that the state, um, EOC is still serving at full activation. We have, um, oh, now, so I should say, this was yesterday morning, Tuesday morning. Um, at that time, one thousand three hundred and ninety-two persons with COVID in New Hampshire. That's fifty over the night before. We have five twenty-one recovering from COVID and forty-two unfortunate deaths due to COVID. They also said they're working on a mapping project with nine-one-one to track outbreaks in long-term care facilities. You've probably seen a little of this on the news, so they're working on that. They said, um, they're continuing to support New Hampshire vendors. These are local vendors who are providing goods and services and monitor whether businesses, um, are out there looking to hire people to help provide, you know, maybe it's mask-making or whatever. Um, the Health and Human Service said they're continuing to process PPE requests and deploy mobile testing. They're still searching for more sources of PPE. Um, the social media trends on the COVID-19 testing, a lot of conversation about the testing that sometimes it's accurate, sometimes it's not. Um, also, social media on unemployment support and discourse on whether or not to, the economy should reopen and also the state's contact tracing efforts. They're still trying to perfect that. Um, we have eighteen first responders, again, as of yesterday morning, that tested positive. Forty-one first responders are in quarantine. Seventeen are staying in alternative lodging. And they did wanna mention that yesterday there was a protest, but that it was without incident. Also, um, I imagine by now Chief Jewett got, they released a law enforcement video pertaining to local police as well as state police. Then, the legal call yesterday at noon. Um, if you remember, on the Monday call, we were talking about, um, bodies of water. So, somebody talked about small ponds and bodies of water, and they had heard that a tiger had been infected with a virus at the Bronx Zoo. And his question is, is there any possibility of cross-contamination between species? And if so, do we have anything in our conservation areas that could help avoid this? The answer was that, um, they always start out with, "We have no, not an answer right now." However, they followed it up with saying, "There is some potential for cross-contamination amongst species, but there's not enough information for them to share it with us and give us appropriate guidance." But they did say they're gonna take it back to the appropriate people and provide an answer later on to us. Uh, another town said that they, their town has a recreation department that runs summer camps and senior activities. The summer camps have about forty-five kids per day as they gather in groups, and they conduct field trips both for our summer camp and seniors on buses. Should they be allowed to have the summer camp or the senior trips in the middle if it doesn't start till the middle of June? And the answer was that pertaining to the summer camps, that childcare licensing units in the state are responsible for licensing all summer camp programs, and they're working on guidance around them. They said they would suggest having whoever runs the camp contact childcare licensing unit to discuss this. And later on, in one of the other reports, they talked about senior trips. Um, then, there, there was somebody who responded, "We had five people go into warranty, quarantine, and Primex did a great job in handling that situation." And then, uh, another town, I think it was Hampstead, said they received an email from concerned citizens asking if there was any way that the town could be able to mandate people to wear masks in public places. And the answer was, "It is certainly not mandated under any executive order that the governor has given us, although it is suggested turning it over to the Mask Municipal Association that maybe they could have input on the local authority." Um, New Hampshire Ma, uh, multiple associa, I'm sorry, New Hampshire Municipal Association answered and said that they do have guidance, um, on their website on contagious diseases. And unless you have statewide order that says it's required to wear a mask, it is not something that the municipal association can enforce or suggest on the local level. There was another fire chief that said they had a meeting, um, concerning the Airbnb situation. It came up before, as you remember, we talked about it or I mentioned it, and it seems to be now completely out of control. They found advertisements on Airbnb in the area where this particular town is claiming that due to domestic violence issues, they have to keep their Airbnbs open and that they're being overwhelmed with people. Can the state contact the short-term rental Airbnbs or what else could be done for enforcement? And the answer is, "We do understand the concerns. If you have a specific owner that's violating the order on what a short-term rental is allowed to do, then reach out to the AG's office and through their number that we've got and the law enforcement memo, and they'll talk you through it with somebody in the Attorney General's office to get more options, because this is a misdemeanor. This is on a case-by-case basis at this point, and if people are lying and you have evidence to prove this, then there'll be additional violations that can be pursued." And then, that same, uh, chief said, "Is there somewhere that your office could actually notify the short-term rentals and Airbnbs?" And the answer is, "We don't have a list of these entities to send, uh, the executive orders to, so I don't think there is a way that the state could serve to notice anyone who might fall under this particular category." The Attorney General in New Hampshire did send letters to many of the retail owners about price gouging, um, and to reach out to Consumer Protection if you find some, more of these concerns and can't get any more answers. Um, another town echoed what the previous chief said, um, and said, "The Department of Revenue has the addresses of these entities, and these orders should be sent out to the short-term rental places by them and come from the state of New Hampshire, not the locals." So, they said that they would check into that. Um, Epping had, uh, one fire tested, fireman tested positive, but Primex denied it and asked for the run sheet, and the question is, "Is it going to be approved? And is it a HIPAA violation to provide the run sheet?" And the answer is, "You should be able to provide the run sheet to the department without violating HIPAA. The department routinely collects all man or medical records. Get the records to the claims rep in the department as soon as you can, and if you have a COVID exposure in the department and it resulted in medical care and loss of work, it does not seem like Primex would deny it." The, um, answer, response to that was, "If Primex continues to deny it, then his question is, will the state cover it?" And the answer is, "If this is a medical expense for a first responder, it wouldn't go under the state workers' comp because they are local. But if it wasn't covered at all and was directly related to COVID, then you should have conversations with Homeland Security Emergency Management to see if it could fall under FEMA declaration." Uh, there was another response to that saying, suggestion, uh, "Could you obtain a court order that could be served?" Um, and this was to the previous rental, um, on short-term rental listing entities just to further put legal punctuation on the governor's emergency order. And the answer is, "The Consumer Protection Bureau is receiving an email from Nancy Smith. She works with the AG's office." And with this concern, and if you wanna follow up, please call Consumer Protection or email them directly. Another town wanted to know about voter registration. For towns like this particular one that are still waiting to convene the business portion of the town meeting, how are we supposed to handle voter registration between March tenth elections and whenever the town meeting is going to be? And the answer is, "There are discussions going on about voter registrations, but we don't think this is an issue yet, but we'll follow up and get back to you on how to handle it." That was legal. Um, now, the next report is, gives you an update on persons testing positive with COVID. One thousand four ninety-one, that's up forty-four from the day before. Recovered five forty-six. Deaths attributed to COVID are forty-two. Total current COVID cases are nine oh three. Persons who have been hospitalized for COVID is two hundred and six, and that's up by five. Current hospitalizations is ninety-four, that's up by sixteen. Persons tested negative at selected laboratories is thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty, and that's up by seven hundred and two, and that's good because that's a negative test. Uh, and then, persons with testing pending is two twenty-five, and that's down by nineteen. So, we have less tests out there, and a lot of that is because they were so overwhelmed, they were getting behind, now they're caught up. In Rockingham County, we've got, um, four hundred and ninety-three cases in Rockingham County. And although that looks like the highest county, if you add all of the Hillsborough, uh, count, all the Hillsborough towns together, it's like two hundred plus two eighty-seven plus one thirty-nine, so they would beat us. Or I shouldn't say us, but beat Rocky Ham County. There was more comments on, um, they said logistic-wise, a hundred and nine PPE orders were distributed, nine PPEs were returned, um, because they said that they could swap them out. Sixty-one PPE orders will be distributed tomorrow and, um, actually, sorry, that should say today. And thank you, Larry, he did pick up, um, a supply. We still don't have any thermometers, and we don't have enough gowns for our police and fire, but we did get some things today. Um, we also have one of the comments on support. There's several outstanding requests in the mission tasks, which is what Larry and I have to do on the EOC site, and unfortunately, those requests are for body bags, thermometers, and filters. They did obtain, again, Larry and I actually called today about the thermometers and, and saying, you know, what's going on, and they said they obtained quotes for two thousand thermometers. Unfortunately, the quotes that, uh, both chiefs, Larry and I got, they all wanted us to order a thousand or more at a hundred dollars a whack, so clearly, we didn't do that. So, we're still waiting, hopefully they can come up with something. Uh, one of the other comments to do with law enforcement is, "State police have been requested by New Hampshire Port Authority, Ports and Harbors, requesting directed patrols of both Hampton and Rye Harbor on the weekends between the hours of eleven AM and four PM." Again, enforced parking regulations pertaining to commercial and recreation areas and facilities to make sure that it's not being overrun like we're seeing on the news. On a positive note, they wanted us to know that, um, United Ways in New Hampshire has raised one million eight thousand dollars. And New Hampshire Charitable Foundation has raised two million eight hundred ninety-five doll, eight hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred and forty-seven. Um, so that's a good thing. And then, they also said, uh, they've reached out to the superintendent at the county jails as issues of PPEs and their needs, so they're asking for current inventory and burn rates and the ability to submit their requests on their own, just like the rest of us have to do. And then, there was a follow-up regarding the question earlier about summer day camps and senior trips, and they said, "As long as the stay-at-home order is in effect, programs should be canceled." They said, "If deposits have been given for either summer day field trips for the day camps or senior trips, someone should reach out to confirm that the deposits are refundable, refundable if you've paid them." Uh, they're now preparing communities for applicant briefings, uh, and questions regarding closing of trails and state parks, they're gonna get back to us on that. Um, and that's that report. And then, early this morning, we had another report saying, um, "We're gonna use Friday morning, uh, Friday, sorry, briefing to kick off the applicant briefings for FEMA disaster." So, the planning team will present the disaster, what it is and what the organization is gonna be like, and the municipal kickoff for applicant briefings will be Friday at noon. Um, so Larry and I will have to participate in the briefings, how, this is how to fill out the paperwork and, you know, all our payroll and our manifest. So, the briefings will be at noon Friday, there'll be some of them on Saturday and also on Tuesday. And they said they're gonna send an email so that we know the times on all of these, because I'm sure we've got nothing else to do, Larry, right? Um, also, planning, the state EOC is still serving at full activation, and they said the, um, Jack, the Joint Information Command, wanted to talk about the social media trends, the discourse on whether or not the economy should reopen. Lot of talk about that. They talked about the governor's advisory board, uh, that received positive feedback and to be aware that CDC has issued an advisory that we would, we would probably see a resurgence of COVID-19 during the flu season later on this year, and you probably saw that on the news as well. Logistic-wise, working hard to help various deliveries, uh, they really wanted to reach out and thank the National Guard because they've been doing a lot of the delivery, um, so we thanked them for that. They wanted us to know Manchester Bo, Boston Regional Airport has had some flight cancellations due to lack of passengers. Uh, cancellations and destinations affected vary day from day to day, so they give us an update daily. There were twelve flights departing today and fourteen more have been canceled. The workforce has been downsized to minimize exposure, and they're doing increased sanitizing efforts, working with the airlines and on future airline capacity and needs. They said the Portsmouth International reports flights canceled due to decreased demand and increased, again, sanitizing efforts and working with airlines on their capacity needs in the future. They did say eighteen first responders have tested positive for COVID-19. Forty-six first responders are in quarantine. Seventeen are in alternative housing. Um, they've added ports, excuse me, ports and harbors for weekend and security concerns. Um, they wanted us to know that New Hampshire Employment Security received ten thousand one hundred and eighty-seven calls yesterday. Um, and that's, let me put my page here. Um, they reminded us that in our local work, workstations at all the EOCs and buildings that we may have open, to lie solid workstation every four hours to ensure everyone is staying safe. And I know both chiefs are very strict on that, so that's being done at least at the police and fire station. And then, the call at noon today, it says, um, "We continue to source the PPEs. Don't hesitate to call us if you're in need, um, and if you haven't heard back after submitting a request through the web EOC, again, call us." One town up in Fremont actually talked about the use of ATV trails, and he said that in his area, it's exploded. And what type of patrols are happening to cover these twelve acres of trails? I'm, I'm sorry, twelve miles of trails. And they said that, "We'll find out, we're not sure what we can spare to get you patrols on this, um, but they'll get, gonna get back to us." Another town said, "Can we get bag valve masks and filters?" Evidently, they're having trouble meeting their, um, mission tasks that they're putting into the EOC, and they said they'd, we'd reach out to them. I, uh, Newton, Ashley, Larry and I said, "Well, we might as well put it out there again. We still didn't get thermometers." And we told them that the company that responded to us said they could deliver in June, and we said, "That's, you know, a little sad that we have to wait that long." And she said, "Please put your orders in again, we're trying to source fifteen thousand thermometers." And then, after this call, she did personally call Larry and I, um, to try to see if she could get something for us. Um, Governor Cuomo, so this was interesting, Governor Cuomo was just, somebody was watching the TV while they were on this call and said, "Governor Cuomo just stated that the president is waiving the FEMA match." And it was funny because everybody in the EOC like, "Oh, my goodness, what is this happening?" And they're quickly trying to look into it, so we don't have an answer back. But that was on evidently TV today. Um, a fire department said, "We're working with Primex on an issue we had." Now, this was yesterday's call, that one first responder that was denied. So, they came back again today and said, you know, "Primex had an issue with getting one of our first responders tested. If they do not cover it, I'm gonna ask it again, is the state gonna cover it?" And their answer was, "We'll work out that for you." Another police chief said, "First responders are getting tested, and the results are going to their primary care, and we can't get the information when they are closed on weekends." So, they said, you know, "How are we gonna get this with, if somebody tested negative, it's really important for police and fire and AMS to know they can go back out to work if the test came negative." So, the answer was, "We've had some issues with results at the state level, and if we can't receive the results because of privacy issues, again, ask that, um, primary healthcare to respond somehow even if it has to be on a weekend." And then, they said, "Public health only finds out when it's positive, so they don't give us results if it's a negative." And they also said, "If it's done through the convenient MD, they are a seven-day operation." So, they really would like us to try to get our first responders to go there, not to your primary. They're fully equipped to work with the state and get us results as soon as they get them." And that's it for my calls.
All right, thank you. Now, a quick question, I know you had it on there. What was the, did we have an increase in positive tests overnight? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, we did. Um, let me give it to you. We had, um, plus fifty-five overnight, uh, sorry, forty-four overnight.
Yeah, okay. So, unfortunately, that's the wrong direction, but...
It is, yes.
We're on the plateaued a little bit. Charlie?
It's also, it's also the way the tests are coming in.
Yeah, true.
You get, you're getting bunches. So, you know, these could have been over days, over different days.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, we'll see, I know, I know that, I saw yesterday, the governor did, uh, name his reopen, uh, task force, if you will, the New Hampshire version of what the president announced, so.
I think Charlie did listen to that today, I think Charlie heard that today.
I, 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 I listened to one hour and fifteen minutes of it today, and it's gonna be on every day from three to five until further notice. And what they're going to do is, they're going to, they're going to tell you how, how this is all gonna work.
Yep.
And, and today was basically, uh, orientation, you know, they're naming off the people that were gonna be, what they were gonna be doing and stuff like that. So, you, you, people really didn't miss anything. And they had five hundred people on the phone call. They were matched out.
That's just the legislature.
Right.
No, there's only four hundred and thirty of us.
Yeah, right, right. But there's like about fifteen people on the, um, the team. I know it's, uh, I think the dear is DJ Bettencourt, so...
Yeah, yeah, I think there's nineteen, but...
Nineteen, yeah. So, Charlie, please feel free to share with us as it goes along, anything you think is, uh, necessary. So, like I said, light at the end of the tunnel, it's not a, it's not a huge strobe light right now, but it's a little bit of a light, so we'll take it.
Yeah, blinking a little.
His big concern is what's going on in Massachusetts.
Right.
And he said that we're a little bit, uh, we're a little bit better than Vermont and Maine's a little bit better than us.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we're so intertwined with Mass, I've said it before, the governor said it before, it's, uh, he, he finally called it what it is, we're kinda like a suburb of Boston up here, so...
Yeah.
As a result, that workforce, if, if Massachusetts is still a hotspot, what do you do, you know? So, so we'll, um, wait and see.
Well, he was basi, Matt, he, he was basically saying that, you know, if you watch the other states and see how they're doing, that's what we're all gonna do at the same time, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
For an opening.
Yeah. So, we'll hang in there. Um, any questions on what Trish just, uh, brought up and Charlie shared?
Uh, Chair, uh, this is Jack Josek, may I ask a question of Trish?
Sure. Jack, go for it.
Hey, hey, Trish, today's paper in the Union Leader, there was several town people, selectmen and so forth, that had articles about camping areas. In fact, Albany, New Hampshire, there's seven hundred and eighty people in the town of Albany, they have seven camping areas. And what they were saying, I think it was a selectman was, that was in the article, that they just don't have the personnel to handle the overflow of, of issues that might develop because of the camping areas are now closed. Has the governor addressed this at all yet?
Yes, so he has, we, we have been waiting. I'm actually surprised, this week so far, we've had, I, I don't even know how many calls, you know, five calls a day or whatever, and he, it hasn't even been mentioned. He said last week that he was gonna work on it. There are people up in the Mount Washington area, Kangamangas area, they're desperately looking for some kind of amendment to his emergency order about campgrounds, because you're right, they are not prepared for this, and they are getting overrun. So, you know, but I'm glad you asked me, I will ask at, um, the Friday call again. Well, actually, I'll have to send an email, because now the Friday calls are gonna be Larry and I setting up, uh, for the FEMA, um, participation. But I can shoot an email to our local liaison and see if we can get an answer.
Thank you very much.
Trisha, uh, could you correct me if I'm wrong? Isn't, isn't it in the order that if you have a trailer or a motorhome and you go in, you can go into the trailer park, but you can't go into cabins and cottages and stuff like that? Now, if you go into, if you go in there, isn't it, you're supposed to voluntary quarantine yourself for fourteen days?
Yes, but some of these people on the calls are saying that, um, how do you police that and how do you, um, one of the calls said, you know, "If you go to the campground, say you booked your campground for two or three weeks and you're coming from out of state, are you really, you're expecting them to quarantine themselves to their trailer or mobile unit for fourteen days when their vacation is over, then they get a leave?" So, there was issues about that, and some of the campground said there are the parking spaces or even the places for the tent setup is so close together, you, you barely can practice social distancing. So, the governor's still saying they're open, but these people are saying it's not realistic. We, number one, they don't have their little stores open, they can't open their bathhouses because they can't keep them clean, so there's a whole other, um, bunch of sanitary issues that could transfer the virus if they open.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, stay tuned, um, I'm with Trish, I'm really surprised we haven't heard anything new on that, but I don't, I don't see how we can get through this week without, uh, getting a different thing. Uh, but, you know, the, the temperature isn't really increasing like all that much, we get like one nice day and that's it, but so...
Right.
As it, as it gets warmer, it's gonna be that, and it's gonna be beaches, you know, how do you police the beaches, so?
That's right.
I don't know. But, but, um...
You gotta remember, the kids aren't in school, normally Memorial Day is when camping area starts, and so now that, uh, the kids are in, out of school, uh... So, now that, uh, the kids are in, out of school, uh, that's why they'll be flocking to New Hampshire.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Has anyone heard anything about the resort loophole that they were looking into or just waiting to see?
They're waiting to see.
Okay, you know, that is if some campgrounds are advertised as resorts, since hotels and resorts aren't open...
Right.
Other than to essential workers, that that might be... Well, we'll see.
This is, this is what I think that task force is gonna do. They're gonna, uh, resolve these problems.
Yep. All right.
All right.
Any, uh, anything anybody wants to bring up on this call while we're all here?
Yes, can I say something? This is Barbara.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Sure. I would just like to thank the EOC, the fire department, the police department, U Selectmen, the folks at the transfer station and the town clerk for keeping us safe and helping us to keep the town running. And the food pantry for providing the assistance to those who are in need.
Nice. Thank you, Barbara. I agree. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, it's not, I... I, I know it's hard to list everybody, but don't leave out the highway department. Cause they're...
Oh, no, okay. Them too.
They've had a couple of storms, so...
Yeah.
Um, can I, it's a little off topic, but I'd just like to, we're having, the cleaning crew comes Monday, right? For the work at Town Hall?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I want to make sure, um, some stuff was pointed out to me that, so, this job is going to be leaving, from what I understand, holes in ceilings and potentially even the side of the building. And, uh, I am concerned about this. Particularly, I wanna make sure that the cleaning, very expensive cleaning crew we've hired is actually going to be cleaning the mess from the people who are doing the job so that our workers don't have to. And that just wasn't clear to me, so I'm curious. And if it isn't, how can we get it included?
I do not believe, this is Diane. A cleaning crew is in to disinfect the building.
Okay, so, are the contractors in the contract for the removal of all the sprinkler heads is part of, is part of their, in the contracts that they will clean up after themselves?
Um, it's...
Cause that's, you know, the ceilings in Town Hall are really, you know, it's lived up there, so...
Mm-hmm. I do not believe that anywhere in their con- their quote.
Is it possible, uh, Board, that we can add on? I think it's a unfair burden to put on the, our brave people in Town Hall that we can add on cleanup from this project to the, the disinfecting group? The cleanup that's just disinfecting?
Let's get all the information, cause here's the way, here's the way I would look at it. Uh, let's have clarity around the fact that this is gonna expose, you know, whatever, uh...
The, yeah, I'm told that there are heads of the sprinkler heads on pipes, which will be less of an issue, but in some rooms, they're in the, you know, the lowered ceiling tiles that will have to be removed. And I believe, uh, on the side of the building too, with siding. So, we need clarity.
Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna just say, let's just forget doing this and when you got, when it's, everything is all done and says that COVID-19 is all over and pandemic, then we can deal with it. I'm not gonna go through this again.
So, uh, before we get there, Diane, so Kate, it sounds like you've got some information. Uh, what was the source of this information?
The information were the, some of the people who worked at, in the building. And it is unclear that regarding who's going to clean up the potential mess from opening up certain areas over Mary, Joe and Cheryl area, et cetera. Where it can make quite a mess, so...
I guess what my...
And how will they close up the holes?
Right, I guess we can solve that part, but I guess what my...
Yeah, let's just call and find out.
Well, no, hold, hold on. What, what my question is, who is telling you that this is gonna expose all this? This, cause I don't have that information. No one's, it doesn't sound like Diane does. Where's this information coming from?
Exactly. We need to call the company.
No, where did you get it, Kate?
From Mary Jo McCullough.
Okay.
And people in the building.
So, where did Mary Jo get it from?
Uh, you would have to ask her directly. But her understanding of, of the scope of the project is knowing that if things are removed that are into the ceiling, she was wondering if part of their job was to close up the holes and who was gonna clean up from this job. So, I think that these questions can be answered if someone contacts one, the company who is removing the sprinkler heads, to find this out, so we know what's true. Cause it could be true, it could not be true. But if it is true, it's asking too much of the employees in the building to have to clean it up. And two, if it is true, can the cleaning crew we're hiring, can we add on the cleanup so the people in Town Hall don't have to do it? That's all I am suggesting we do.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, I can tell you, in doing fire prevention for many years, I've never seen a sprinkler company or a fire alarm company do what Kate is asking for it to be done. I, I know in Diane's defense, when this was all talked about, there, there was talk about removing the sprinkler heads, the first floor tiles would have to be replaced. And the fire department connection that's on the outside of the building would have to be covered up. At no point in time, when, again, when this was discussed in a public meeting, did anyone ever say that the contractor that was being hired to remove the sprinkler heads was also gonna be hired to patch up the walls, replace ceiling tiles and fix the exterior wall of the building.
Okay, so that means they are not gonna do it.
And, and that is in, you know, in her defense, she was, because we, when, her and I talked, including with the building inspector, there was, again, that, you're talking three separate jobs, in my opinion. One is remove the heads, one is replace the heat detectors and one is repair the ceiling tiles and patch the walls. And then the last part of the equation, which I had the conversation with the fire alarm contract when this was proposed months ago. Mr. Fort and I still have to go back in the building, both buildings, when the job is completed, to do a fire alarm test to make sure that all the work that they did works. I can honestly tell you, like I, I, I said this the other night. The fire department is still making house calls. I, I mean, these contractors are gonna come in and do work at Town Hall. I understand the concept that we have to fumigate the building for COVID-19. But again, every time somebody walks out of that building, goes grocery shopping, goes to the gas station, walks back in that building, they can possib- possibly be contaminating the building. Uh, that, that's my point. I mean, I'm, maybe I'm missing something here. You, the town hired contractors to go in and do a job. Everybody, I'm sure the selectmen seen the contract. Cause they wouldn't have voted on a contract without seeing the contract. I'm sure nowhere in that contract it said, "Sheet rock walls, replace ceiling tiles." I mean...
So, here's, here's, let me jump in. Let me, before we spend another twenty minutes on this, this is what I'm gonna suggest. Um, we have a custodian who we're currently paying, who doesn't have anything to do because the buildings are closed. Can Diane, can you reach out to Tony and ask him if he would be interested, should I say? Uh, in coming through, whatever, Saturday or Sunday to clean up, um, you know, whatever? If there, if there is, and you should ta- talk to the contractor too, because we should verify with the contractor what kind of mess there is. Because when I hire somebody at my house to go into an exposed ceiling or whatever, before they leave, they're vacuuming in their sweepin', before they leave. Um, so, maybe there's nothing. Uh, let's just get the straight answers. And is the board still okay if we get the straight answers just to tell Diane to move forward? Are we still okay with that?
I am, and you had the right idea, Matt. Have Tony come in and, you know, fix whatever's gonna be fixed.
How about everybody else on the board?
We're paying him.
I, I'm, I'm less on, I'm more on the fence about the timing of it. But I think I'm the minority. So, that said, if we can address the issues that I mentioned, that is a good start.
So, Larry's on too? Larry, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Again, you know, any contractor, the only mess they're gonna probably clean up is if they have rust that fell on the floor or dust that fell on the floor. They're gonna have to sweep that up and get rid of it. But if the tiles, no. And patching the walls, no. And patching the outside wall, no. But the general cleanup, they should be able to do.
Yeah, I don't think we expect anybody to tile and patch. Does, is anybody expecting that?
No.
Okay. I, I think, I think it's, you know, vacuum up, sweep up. And then, um, if, if Tony is interested in coming in and taking a look at what work there is to do, maybe he can take care of that for us. And then, uh, down the road, if there has to be some sort of tiling and patching, we can take care of that. But, but, um, Diane, I, I think you, I, I think you have your direction, Diane, to just verify this with the contractor, but I, I don't know. Person- personally, I, I don't think this is out of the ordinary. But, but the, uh, but we will have somebody coming in on Monday to do the, the sort of deep clean. And of course, the other option is, and, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace, Board, but the other option is, as Diane said, just let's not even bother with this. Let's do it later. But this is, this is like the third time we've talked about this. And my, my rule always is, three strikes, you're out. If we have to talk about it a fourth time, I'm not gonna wanna do it. So, do we need to vote again?
And if you want. Can I ask a question, Matt? This is Jack Hosack.
Go for it, Jack. Go ahead.
Matt, is somebody gonna test these guys when they come in the building to make sure they don't have the flu?
No.
I mean, oh, why, why, I, I, we have to, I would think. And if they go out to lunch and so forth, I mean, I...
Sure, but, you know, the, to the chief's point, there's many ways of contact, right? So, what we're doing is we're having them come in on a day where there's nobody else in the building except for Diane, all suited up. And the cleaning crew is gonna come in before the, sort of the COVID, cleaning crew will come in before anybody comes back in.
Okay, so they're gonna, after, after the gentlemen remove the, the, uh, the heads, then, then the building's gonna be clean? Is that what you're telling me?
That's, that's the plan on Monday.
Okay.
So, work on Friday. Clean on Monday.
All right, okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question before you finish your meeting. May I ask it? This is Barbara.
Yeah, let me make, let me make sure we're done with this topic. Do we need to vote on anything? What's, what it, so, does anybody on the board wanna make a motion? I think is what I'm trying to say.
Just like, keep it the way it is. Have them come in Friday.
Yeah, I'll be outnumbered anyway. So, keep it the way it is.
Okay, so we don't need a motion. Uh, Barbara, you had something?
Yeah, I was just asking, I mean, it's sounding like nobody's gonna be allowed in the building for a while. Has the board made any sort of decision yet on whether, um, people are gonna be furloughed and have to apply for unemployment or anything?
No decision other than what we're currently doing.
Okay.
But, uh, the board continues to, to meet and try, we're trying to address things as they happen like everybody in the, the country is. So, as of today, that's the answer, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, anything else for tonight? All right, I will, um, look for a motion to adjourn from somebody?
Go move.
Go move.
All right, at least one of those is a second. Let's, let's, uh, go, Charlie?
Yep.
Anyone who wants a second, Charlie seconds?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm an I.
Okay, and I'm an I. I think I heard four I's, so... So, thanks, everybody.
Matt, don't forget the next calls on Monday, not Friday. Just remind you.
Exactly, so, so take Friday off. Like I said, go to the movies, go to the beach. Go skiing.
Or campground.
And we'll, right. You can go to the camp, you can camp. We'll talk to you Monday.
Wonderful weekend.
Thank you.
Okay, if I hear anything on campground, I'll send it to you. Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Bye. Bye-bye.